The Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the home news review, the Star Leisure on the Highland Park Planet, and January 8th, 2025, and was posted at Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey, and it remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my right and left of council chambers. Nerea, can you give us the pleasure of the vision?
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local.
Mayor Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember Doris.
Yes.
Number Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Councilmember Trenice Chilwell. Councilmember Piston.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Tony.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hoover.
Here.
Now, discussion item will be the 2025 municipal budget. No formal action will be taken.
Handing it off?
And I'm handing it off to Terry. And I believe everyone has their budget in hand.
So, thanks, there. Yes, I made a copy of my memo and kind of the summary sheets from the budget worksheet that I emailed around. That's what you have in front of you. Um, that's the version. There's also a copy of the Main Street budget because we did want to just briefly touch on that. As kind of proposed. Um, so that's what you have. And I was basically, uh, if you don't mind, I'd like to just kind of walk you through some of the points in the memo. And then we can discuss individual buckets and or questions that, you know, may come up.
Sure.
Um, kind of the big, and I want to just make sure to point out, we have Nerea here, our CFO. Like, if everybody knows, it may be Harlan. I don't know if you guys have met yet. So, this is Nerea Champion, our CFO. Um, and she's been interwoven of pulling all this stuff together. Um, so, the big kind of high level points that the memo makes, and I'd like to highlight here, um, kind of the big changes from last year really boil down to three things. One, we're proposing a potential de-acceleration of our tax sale, which would basically mean, instead of collecting all of our, um, billed taxes by the end of the year, we would hold that tax sale the following year. And, uh, but in order to do that, you have to budget for what you don't collect. And that, we estimate at $400,000 based on our experience by last year's tax sale. The advantage of doing that, uh, A, it is extremely painful. And some of you have been on the receiving end of these calls, uh, from a homeowner who's lived here my whole life, never missed a bill in my whole life. But if you miss that fourth quarter payment and you don't realize it, you missed our notices, which there is not much turnaround time between when those payments are due and when the first round of notices and the list gets generated for the tax sale. You're talking about a matter of weeks. Um, you're in the tax sale. You can get out of the tax sale, but it is, it's, it's, it's also extremely tight turnaround for the tax office. Uh, it's a busy time of year. Um, and we're also doing kind of the last billing for the water department. So this would give us a little bit of a breather. It's a little easier on the taxpayer, those who pay their own taxes, not through their, their mortgage. Okay? I mean, you know, they come to us. So that's one of the advantages. But you take a hit because you have to now budget for that money you're not going to collect. Over time, we might find collections are better, but yeah. Yeah.
Just a quick question. Then we would be starting this for the first time, so we roll it over.
So essentially, we'd be skipping a tax sale in 2025.
But would it average out over, if we continued it again?
So we would have to budget again for whatever we don't collect in 2026. Now, we might have more time to do notices and things like that. You know, we'll continue to try to collect as much as we possibly can. And if our experience, is that the question you're asking? I'm not sure.
That's sort of it. If we say, well, we're going to do, instead of doing it in the fourth quarter, so that we make our, you know, 99.6, I think we're at for collections, then we roll it into the following year, so we have to budget for that shortfall.
Right.
Do we make it up in the following year? And then it becomes a rolling event, so it's back to normal again.
I'll put it in my words and you tell me if I'm answering your question. The way I think about it is, we take this $400,000 hit because we're basically going from a $200,000 reserve for tax sale, uncollected, excuse me, uh, taxes, to a $600,000 reserve for uncollected. And we'll have to maintain that budget line moving forward.
The money in the budget.
But the, the blow to the taxpayer and to our budget is this year moving forward. And we may find with experience that number could go down based on where our actual collection is. But this is the year where we have hit. We did use a little more surplus to kind of soften that blow as best we could without overusing the surplus we have. But I, is that the answer to your question? Because we're going to have to maintain that uncollected.
That's, that's a little bit more of it. But what I'm saying is, if that then normalizes, does it become back to normal for the following year?
It will always be the next year. It will always be the next year.
So we're always going to be building that in, but we're always going to.
This will be the only year with no tax sale.
We're only, we would always then be collecting it again in first quarter or around then.
We were discussing when we would do that tax sale, we could delay. It doesn't have to be in the first quarter of the year. That might not be optimal, but that's a discussion.
I think what Phil is saying hypothetically, we did it for 2026. Come 2027, we're going to do the same thing.
Yes. So we'll.
Do the taxes then average out?
Yes. Does it better get, does it level out?
Does it level out?
From this $400,000 that we're putting in?
It's going to stay there. It's going to stay.
So the answer is yes, it levels out because the money's going to be.
I understand.
So we don't have to continue.
But the collection in the following year levels it out.
Yes, it should. Because of past experiences, as any indicator with our accelerated sale, we always had good collection. You know, sometimes they can't sell the weens and we're left holding the bag. We don't anticipate that happening. Sorry, I missed, I was overthinking.
No, you haven't. So the message to the public is this year, it's going to be a bit of a hit. But number one, it averages out, makes life a lot easier, and we are giving release to our taxpayers. There are a number of people who run into this problem.
Yeah. And, and the reason we have, I'm sorry, Matt, the reason, you know, it's, it's always been kind of one of those things where it just seems too daunting because of, it's such a, for our budget, $400,000 is not inconsequential. But it came up this year, um, in, you know, emails between council members and me during the last tax sale. It was incredibly busy. For some reason, this last one was crazy. And we just decided, let's at least have the conversation. Let's not assume it's a no. Um, so, yeah, Matt, I'm sorry.
Um, what is the surplus that we're using to cushion the blow? How much of it is?
Well, it's, it's to cushion several blows. I haven't gotten through my whole presentation. Over last year, we added another.
Maybe you should run through and then get the question because I think as you run through, then the questions are answered and we could just make a note.
So, um, so remember that one. See if we can get there. So that's kind of one big $400,000 chunk. Okay? Um, and the other area is our debt service, which is basically paying back what you borrowed. And that went up by just about $400,000, so $390 something. Okay? So those are two areas, like, coming out of the gate that are just a lot different. $800,000 pretty much from last year to this year. The first being discretion. We don't have to do that, but it's our recommendation. If not this year, we would suggest we should do it, but maybe this is the year. I don't know. We'll, we'll talk about that. Um, there are also, um, the, the rest of the budget is one, uh, I'm just going to follow my memo because I had a, my method to my madness when I wrote it. The, um, other thing I want to point out, if you look at the appropriations summary sheets, it starts on page five of the packet, um, but, you know, skip to the end. I ran it a couple of ways because if you look at total general appropriations, again, this includes the debt service and the de-accelerated tax sale. You know, the percent change over all appropriations is 11.4%. But if you take out grants, which thankfully we're doing well on grants, uh, because they are offset by revenues, the total appropriation increased with the de-accelerated tax sale and debt and some of the other things we'll talk about. It's 4.3% over prior year appropriations, uh, which is pretty close to what it was last year, just to give you a general sense of what the rest of this budget looks like. Kind of a couple of areas I want to highlight that are, for one reason or another, over what they were last year. And this isn't exhaustive, but these are the ones that I thought were different. Uh, we have an increase in clerk expenses due to primary election costs. And we also have an additional $8,000, which we hadn't budgeted for prior, even though we always have to pay it at the end of the year. Um, and so we're trying to not scramble at the end of the year to pay it. Um, and then we have general code updates, which is basically, you can hire our code codification company to basically do a legislative and code update to kind of scrub our code, and that's the code. So that's, that's, we don't have to do it, but it's been a long time. So the advice would be, we're going to have to do that at some point. Um, the library budget, um, the proposal that is in the, the numbers you see is a 3% increase over last year. Um, the, their initial request was more, but I, in consultation with Phil and Mike Fabbish, suggested that, you know, subject to your discussion, three would be more appropriate. Um, but that's for you guys to kind of further chew on. The fire salary and wages is up, uh, in part to address an additional hire that would be recommended, um, in part to help us stave off some overtime increases that we're having. And we can talk a little bit more. It did come up at, uh, Public Safety this morning. Um, so this is, one solution is to hire a full-time person to work evenings so that if someone calls out in evenings, we're not bringing in someone from the day shift into the night shift, thus incurring these overtime costs. It won't solve it entirely, but it will, we were able to lower overtime a little bit in anticipation if we go that route. Um, public work salary and wages, we discussed at our, um, goal setting session. There seemed some enthusiasm about an additional labor that could maybe focus on the avenue. That's something that we did put in. Uh, again, don't have to do it. Um, we could do it next year. You know, these, these are discussion points. And then, uh, electric service and street light is just up. And I just, they were up significantly, so we highlighted those. Um, Nerea caught that when we were doing the budget. So we, we just redistributed the money there. We had some areas where we felt like we had a cushion, so we offset some of that with lowering, like, natural gas, for example. Um, so those are kind of my high level points on kind of changes from last year's proposal to you to this year. I thought, you know, I, I've run some numbers different ways, kind of in anticipation of that. But I guess, let me pause there and maybe, Matt, you can come back to your question.
Yes.
I don't know that I addressed it at all. Oh, yes. Yes, something about.
So, so, um, uh, with the de-acceleration, it's essentially, it's a $400,000 charge against. And, and are we, our surplus is less? It seemed like our surplus was $200,000 more this year.
We used more this year.
So we're taking more out or we are?
So we were 2,000, 2,250 in '24, and this proposal says 2,450. Um, and so we, we looked at our numbers, what we regenerated last year, and felt we had a, we could, we could do that without, even if we didn't regenerate the full $200,000, we had enough there to, to be comfortable with that. We were able to regenerate what we, um, used last year. And so with that, that's why we, we, we suggest we could go a little deeper, having had that experience.
So we're, we're saving an extra $200,000 in surplus. Is that correct or we're spending that?
We're spending it.
Okay.
With the, and, and I can't tell you for sure, we'll regenerate that 200, but in looking at, we didn't use up all ours. This is not all of our surplus.
Right. Okay.
We have some in reserve that should be not be able to regenerate the full 2,450. If we only regenerate what we did last year, we're okay. We don't want to go much deeper than that. We bounced that off Lori, our auditor, and some other folks. There's no, like, rule, like, towns must have X% of their budget in surplus. But we've gotten out of, since I started here where we had nothing. And now we have a cushion so that if we have some unforeseen really big deal, we do have something. It will help if it was on the bottom.
Yeah. Remember the budget class?
Maybe Matt remembers.
I missed the question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm bad, I'm being bad. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay. Um, yeah.
I, I'm sorry, and this is a dummy question. What, what is, do we have an accounting of our, of our surplus?
Well, we, we know what it is. It's about 4.7 million.
All right.
So we'd be basically going down to about 2, which we think is a healthy number. And, and based on kind of prior iterations of getting our bond rating, that is definitely something they look at as like kind of your stability, that you're not going yo-yo up and down. And you kind of have a, whatever your, it's not a formal policy, but you have a practice of, you know, maintaining that and building it back each time. So we've got a, last couple of years, we had a pretty good track record.
Should we ask questions or?
Yeah, please. I mean, preferably on the first part. I guess on that kind of the opening gambit stuff, but also if there's points in other areas of the budget that you wanted to review, I guess I don't have a better way to go. So I must be, or had a better.
No, no, no. This is the way, this is fire away.
I, I, one of the questions that I had is that, that on some of the grants.
Yeah.
And, and I wasn't sure when I, we talked about earlier, so I just wanted to clarify it. It's just that in 2024, there's a whole bunch of grants that are listed. And then in 2025, they're not. And so my question is, are they not listed because they don't exist or not listed because we haven't got them yet?
Both.
So some of those grants.
Like, a good example is, uh, the Community Center Capital Improvement Legislative Grant. That was, you know, $330. That's not coming back. But what we did get was, and I could have made them in the same line if you wanted, Capital Improvements to South Third in a million. So in a way, we did, we more than recouped that, you know.
I, I guess what I'm wondering is, is that, that is there any possibility that some of those are still going to come in?
Yes.
As a result? And, and are we going to know those before we?
As many as come in before we introduce, we'll go on the sheet.
Okay. And, and do we have any sense of?
The only one that I think might is sometimes the, uh, the recycling tonnage one. Yeah. Um, and I'm trying to think what else. Most, a lot of these came in, you know, come in routinely, well, well after our budget. And, I mean, I could certainly highlight for you the ones I think are likely. But some of these are, you know, the Middlesex County, uh, open space for Felton, but we'll probably go in for Mollybach, but I just don't have that in yet. So there's no, and there's a, those chapter 159 resolutions that the council passes during the course of the year are how we insert them into the budget after the bag. One point I would like, and especially is, is important, I know you know this, Matt, but they're off, it's expenditures offset by revenue. So as they come in, they're kind of tax neutral in the sense that they, the, the expenditure is here, but so is the revenue in the revenue sheet, unless there's a match. Sometimes there's a match. But, um, so that's.
So the expenditures for some of these.
The revenues in the revenue sheet, you'll see for every one that we're anticipating in the appropriations, there's a revenue point.
And, and an expenditure.
The appropriations, yes, and the revenue. So they're in both places, which is annoying because oftentimes we, we, like, the numbers don't match at nine, 10 out of 10. It's because it got entered into one and not the other. And, and so that's, that's also one of the reasons we like to wait till we're sure, just because you're not supposed to count those chickens until they've really hatched. We get a letter of commitment from whatever entity or the grant.
No, that, I mean, that the, um, that actually, my bigger question is, if they were not in yet and weren't going to be not tax neutral, they were going to have an effect on the tax. I'd like to know that, but if they're tax neutral, doesn't.
With the exception of matches, but what I've done, there is a line for municipal matching appropriations.
Right.
There's like a small shade tree grant that I know we're going to go for and are likely to get that has like $3,000 match. You know, we're talking, but like the NPP match is in there, municipal alliance grant match is in there. So those aren't to the extent that we have to have skin in the game, but the lion's share of the grants we get are, are grants in full 100%, the ones we're used to. COPS being the exception, but the COPS grant, our match is, you know, fringe payroll related. So we're not showing it that way. It just, it's, you know, we're showing the revenues that our match is being handled kind of through the budget. That's going to be Nerea's problem to figure out how to afford that.
Um, I don't know if it's possible to do this, but the cannabis tax revenue, is that based on, is it based on a number of stores based on, like, how many stores?
What we got, it's, it was Anja and Herbalist.
So there's.
So that's only what was collected in 2024.
So the $55,000 projected for 2025 is based on two stores?
Yep.
Okay. So we should expect that with additional stores, we're going to.
But we can't anticipate more than what we see.
So hopefully, if that goes up this year, in next year's budget, you'll see $100,000. You know, that's the goal.
I just wasn't sure how many, how many we had.
And keep in mind, there's always a delay. They open.
Yeah.
And then they have to have a month in, and then they can start remitting the tax payment. So I think Main Street came in kind of late in the year.
Yeah.
Early in this year. So we just didn't have any 2024 experience with that. But at least it's on the budget now. You can see it in the revenues, so that's something.
Along with licensing.
Right.
Oh, you're looking at your questions?
Uh, I think I got most of them answered earlier, so.
While Matt is looking, anyone else?
Um, conversation that we had this morning with regards to firefighters, this is in, in the memo as well. I think some of that might be more of the, you know, which policy we're going to follow that we discussed this morning. I, I don't know if now is the time, but just the announcement is that we incurred rather high overtime because some of our, we have full-timers and their staff, so they do tours, 24-hour tours and so on. Um, and we've had to call in per diems who will, you know, are full-time at times. When they call out or they're unavailable because they're on another tour with another department, we've incurred overtime calling one of our three in. So there's kind of a balance here. Realistically, I think it's going to be a little bit above to bring in one more full-time firefighter so that we cover a lot of those spots. And we have people here all the time. But then we're still going to have to fill in with some per diems and we're still going to have some overtime problems. So I, I think we need to, you know, we will add it soon, but maybe not for tonight. Discuss, you know, are we going to go with the full-time? Are we going to cover per diems or bring in more per diems?
Yeah. And one thing I'll mention, just to give you an order of magnitude, I just had, wanted to double check my numbers. We had overtime costs in the magnitude of $70,000 last year from various places, from, from fire department. So it's a significant, and we had budgeted, what was it, Nerea, like, $45,000? But fortunately, there was, we, we didn't fully higher up, so we had some cushion in there, remind me. So one of the things we were looking at was, well, how do we, you know, another approach would be, forget a full-time person at night. We could just fill it with a series of seven days a week, part-time individuals. But the challenge there is filling that schedule. It, it, it's any, we, just to be clear, we have two people on at all times except for the daytime. We have three, um, I think. Um, I'm 99% sure about that. So we would, we could have three on at night so that if somebody calls out, we've always at least got two. And then we don't necessarily even need to bring somebody in.
Right.
Unless we had some reason to think. Um, so I budgeted, it was easier to explain, this is a full-time body. But the reality is, for the same money, if you include their benefits package, um, we could probably do one part-time person seven days versus one full-time person four days. So it's, it's going to be, at the end of the day, from a budget standpoint, um, it's, it's, it's a question. And either way, would help with the overtime problem. But I get concerned about having so many part-time, the roster becomes more and more unmanageable. One thing the fire chief was going to look into was how much appetite from our existing part-time folks? Was it, would be, it would be easy to fill these overnight shifts? In which case, that might inform. But from a budgetary standpoint, I guess what I want you guys to think about is not so much, should it be a full-time and part-time tonight? Because pretty much for the same price, we could get some coverage, uh, from the budget. It's more like, it's going to be more. And are we okay with that? You know, you know, or do we just, you know, I think we have to do something because the overtime costs were so up that we have to do something and it'd be kind of, it's almost a break even, even if we don't do the full time.
Well, I think that, um, we should wait for Public Safety to bring a recommendation to the governing body and let's have a discussion.
The chief is going to look into whether with the, with the roster, it's not staff, but the roster he has, which one, which way is going to be more workable? And talk with the chief, we're going to talk about which choice seems the better choice when, when, because if he says, well, we've got 10, 10 per diems that we could look at, but only four of them really say they're willing to make a commitment to, to us, that we go one way. If they say that we, we have a commitment for all 10 and they're anxious, then we have another way. So, and then Chief, Chief Shami's going to discuss it with Chief Abrams and bring it to, um, Public Safety, hopefully next month, so that we can make.
Budget sooner than that.
Yeah, I, I, I really like that.
But it's more like if we could, if we allocate in salary and wages enough for either alternative, which we kind of have, we.
Right.
I think that's a better way to go.
Yeah.
We can pivot.
But we can make the policy.
We don't have to hire until we make a decision.
Later, based upon what we feel is more important for coverage for the amount of calls and the safety of the public. Yeah, budget-wise, it kind of works out, but there is a policy decision behind it that we.
That's why I say, when you guys come, when Public Safety comes and make a presentation to us, then we'll have a very informed place in which to work from.
Shami's got to discuss, Abrams got to discuss, and then Public Safety go over it and make a recommendation.
I think we should build in that cushion for either scenarios.
So that's what's kind of in the numbers you have here. It kind of assumes one of those two hiring scenarios.
Yeah, just a, a note on the library because it is up by 35,000, but, uh, we did some, we did, uh, library's using a lot of attrition and internal promotions. And Mike is moving to a policy of more part-time librarians, which tends to be popular in the library world. So that it did go up, but there are some other, they're offset by some, in addition, additional costs for contract services because of, you know, library improvements. Um, the new services, we're dropping hoopla, but we have other services that we have to contract with. Uh, but by doing internally, and then Terry did knock off, uh, 54,000 to reduce the request because, because we've requested more than what we wanted because we're an independent board and we could do that.
We're a very stringent council.
But with the way, the library doing it, the, the way they're doing it with the internals on it, we actually managed to keep it to 35,000. Um, you know, with the one-third mill plus the budget, um, it really is a good. I was speaking with Michael again today, early this morning, and again this evening. And it's a good work of budget with staffing, and he is moving into the, uh, we have been moving a new plan, which, which the, uh, the board is very much in support of, is moving to, um, more, actually more staffing, more available staffing at peak hours, but with part-time, part-timers, because then we don't have the, we don't have the pack, we don't have the insurance and pension. Um, and it is, it's a trending that we're seeing in other libraries, we're moving to a lot more part-time staff to cover a lot of nuts and crannies, whereas you have a regular employee, you know, that they work eight hours or 10 hours, or 10-hour shifts sometimes, then, you know, they're not looking to stay at night. So you're limiting your night hours, you're limiting your weekend hours. So it is a trend.
Mayor, seven days, which I know was a big deal a couple of years ago. And, um, I will say they are taking on full responsibility for custodial management. You know, DPW was doing a lot of work, even, even despite them having, so they're, they are taking that. And we're, we're trying to get more to a landlord-tenant arrangement if we, you know, finish, now that we've held.
Yeah, no, exactly. And we've been looking at that since the, since the library reopened, we've been looking at, at, at new planning going forward. And, um, the plan is, is working out pretty well. The, the, the increases were, um, you know, in services that we have to pay for were largely offset except for that 35,000. So that's, you know, just news on the library. It is the one independent board that, yeah, uh, you know, so that's the FYI of that.
And the only other thing I mentioned in talking with Mike B., uh, was that they are, he's been talking to me. I don't know if it's come up in the meetings yet, hopefully, about getting to doing more fundraising now that they've got the, the renovation kind of nailed down. But there's some new projects that are coming up, and he mentioned that that was something he was trying to.
We did have a rather serious conversation about it, uh, not at the last board meeting, which was rather active, but the board meeting before that.
Yeah. I just mentioned it because those are historically things that council members have required. It was not, you know, we're in building mode for so long, and it's nice to hear them talking about.
Not building mode, roof mode.
Yeah.
That's the.
Excuse me. Jason had a question.
So, uh, here's my.
So up, there's a hand before when we were still talking about the additional buyer. Oh, no, no, no.
I missed your hand.
Then I think, no worries. I was just going to briefly say that I'm in favor of, I think it makes sense to move forward with the additional investment in. Full time, part time, we can work that out later. I think that made sense to kind of address the overtime. Additional investment in fire safety. And then I was just going to also go back to, I think the deacceleration of the tax sale seems to be the biggest. Fiscal impact or difference from last.
Discretionary fiscal impact, you know.
Well, I was gonna, I, I think it's well worthwhile. I, I think for administrative reasons, but more importantly, so that we save people from the headache.
It's always the sweetest, like, senior you ever met, you know.
We're the Grinch.
I was just gonna say we can give it some time to try to, you know, work things out with folks in that kind of situation without scaring them to death. And provide some flexibility and we'll still recover the money. It's just a matter of, going back a little later. But just a side note, tangent on it. It reminds me that I, I believe that we have that new system in place where you can automate your, like water and sewer. I believe that extends to the tax collection as well. So I just remind you, we should promote that, just that people like that don't have.
Talking about that, I was, I actually thought I better sign up. I can't forget anything my own. Absolutely, because even if, even if we don't have the tax sale, you incur, if you forget to pay, you incur a lot of charges, you know. So and we do send the horrible delinquent notices and everybody gets mad at us, but that's basically your reminder, you forgot to pay your bill. Trying to get your attention.
And we all have enough, like, bills to worry about. So I just, yeah, putting out there that you have that ease of, like, it seems.
Yeah, I think you're right.
We're still gonna have the seniors that come in with their payments because.
Yeah.
And some of them come with it, with cash payments.
Yeah.
Yeah, true story.
Some of it is socialization at the window. But it's not the lines like it used to be, but it is back up. Yeah, COVID was down here and now they're, it's not around the block, but it's definitely busy.
Um, so I, I know that debt service is mandatory and there's nothing we're going to pay for it. Can you give us a second?
Just one second.
I'm sorry.
Councilperson had a question.
I apologize.
For the seventy seven, because it says for full time, so we would just calculate for the.
Really, for the purpose of the budget, as long as it's in salaries and wages, we can charge it out either way.
So, so, okay, so this was for one full time.
But that's pretty much what one, one part time, part time hours, seven days a week would be about the same person.
Right. But if we can get two and then put less hours, no?
It wouldn't, we already have two on, this would be to add a third.
This would be a third full time person with benefit.
Yes.
But wouldn't the cost be different with a part timer or no?
But there's more because there, there, we have, if we did a part timer for four days, it would be less. You're right. But we're now trying to get them, if we go with the part time round, we have the savings on the health benefits. We could then do seven days a week.
Two part time.
Two part time, yeah. Not two part time. We already, one person, one additional part time person, seven days a week. The night shift's longer than the day shift. There's a whole thing. Just trust me. It kind of works out. I ran the numbers with Norman and Chief Abrams. It's pretty close. It wouldn't all come out of. Fire though, some of the savings with a part time approach will come in other areas of the budget, like health benefits, for example.
Okay, but then with the, with the full timer, we have to guarantee them full time hours at all times, right?
Yeah, with the full time and.
Yeah, but the part time, that's what I'm saying, the part timer.
Right, but a part time person, seven days a week is more than the full time person's salaries, what I'm trying to tell. Because that seventy seven is also the fire chief's rates and some other things.
Oh, okay.
It's not the salary of a full time, no, full time firefighter, a brand new person's around it.
Okay.
Some of that increase was due to the wage increases.
So what I was saying, we're not able to get like two part timers and not put them on for seven days?
That's something that the public safety committee is going to get back to us.
Don't think of the part timers as individual number of people. Think of it as shifts covered. Because it could be seven part time people, one on Monday, one on Tuesday, doing a ten hour shift, one on Wednesday. So think of it as, the way I'm trying to think about it is, imagine you're, right now, we have two people at night, part timers. Might be different people every night of the week, but there's two on at night. And they make an hourly rate, they all make the same rate. So for the purpose of math, it doesn't matter if it's seven people, two people. You know what I'm saying? So it, it's, but seven days a week times by, let's say, I don't know if it's ten hour shifts or twelve hour shifts, I forget. In the evenings, it's longer. They, you know, when you math it out, it, it comes to more than the fifty thousand. But if you factor in the benefits, you don't offer them, they're savings elsewhere. So we could probably, with the numbers you have here, afford either of those alternatives, subject to the kind of due diligence that the chiefs are going to do. Because I'm, I'm, I could go, you can probably persuade me on either approach. Some part of me likes a full time person because I think it's less. Spending less time doing like shift management. Because you know you got that person there and you get, and gets the chief more full time people to kind of direct and give the data. But that's my bias. I want them to.
And that's why I suggested that go back and take a comprehensive look and report back to us and then we can decide which one we're going to go.
And the truth is, by the time we hire somebody, there's a month or so, so we probably have enough cushion that we can work out. Councilmember here?
Um, I, the four hundred thousand dollars we're paying in debt service, I know we have to pay that, it's mandatory. I just get a sense of. How are we doing in terms of the amount of debt that we have compared to other cities our size or, or are we, are we, we have more debt than we ought to do, not less? I mean, we always want less debt, but like, I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of, of. Whether we have been borrowing too much or whether we have not been borrowing enough. And I don't, like, is there a way of, is there a metric that?
Get back to you. I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Compared with other towns.
Yeah, I, I don't know that you can do it that way. I know sometimes when, before you go issue new bonds, you'll look at when you have some breakage coming, like in twenty twenty nine is probably. The first, we looked ahead and that's probably the first time where some old debt kind of falls away repayment. And so that might be a time where you might take on, but the truth is, there's going to be things like you can't stop doing. But it's a fair point, I think, and actually, Norey and I were talking about, you know, having a meeting with bond council to kind of discuss just that.
Just like to stay on top of it and make sure that we're not overbetting and.
But, you know, most of the things that are in there are, you know, projects that are. Roads, you know, mostly roads and, and one of the big ones was the six million in acquisition.
Debt services is the main expenditure too. Do know that.
So, but it's a good question. I just, I'm not enough of an expert to give you a solid answer. Jason?
Follow up question. So is there a statutory cap on the amount of you can, that you can bond for? Are we?
I am not aware of it, but I, yeah, I think it's, there's also, you know, we have to look at.
Yes, Dave, I thought there was, I could be wrong, but I was just curious.
Good question. I don't, I am not, I never run into that in any of the local finance notices that have come all across my desk, but that doesn't mean that there's not.
Two percent or whatever.
Councilmember George?
Very generic question on page one.
One, yes.
Because this is what we have to deal with, the councilman, of the six of us that vote on. Is, we talked about the four hundred thousand de-accelerated rolls in. But the, the total net net on page one for the total bill on, for the average. And we're talking about average tax bill of roughly twelve thousand seven hundred. Nets out at three point four one percent tax increase. On page one of.
The first, yeah. At the end, total bill. You're looking at, before we change the school levy.
All right, that's.
You printed out, I printed out a new one for everybody here. Sorry. I'm like, my numbers aren't matching. So, yeah, I did, I highlighted it in yellow for the new sheet because I got some updated numbers from the school, which I had assumed two percent, it was a little more than two. So, sorry, that's why. It's order of magnitude, you're right, your number didn't tie to my number.
No, that's, that's, no, when people ask us and when we're.
Yeah, so. And looking at the printout, the, just use those numbers again, Phil, same. But, uh, but yeah, we're looking at the average residential assessment at four hundred eighty one thousand five hundred. Meaning the average bill is twelve thousand eight hundred and ten with this budget that I've just painted. So that's a four hundred and sixty nine, four hundred and seventy dollar a year difference for the average tax bill. With, that's assuming a two percent county thing, which we haven't gotten to the bottom where the county's doing it. And the school, I think that's pretty close, but we're going to have a meeting with them soon. And that, you know, isn't done, but it gives you a good idea. So this, that number assumes the de-accelerated tax sale, the debt, which we have your choice anyway. The fire, DPW and any number of other little things that are pointed out already. So that's the kind of impact. It's three point eight one over prior year for a total bill.
Okay, so that's what I was saying.
But even if we were to not.
If we did accelerate, oh, funny you ask.
Whoa.
But I calculated it.
That was not a black question.
The, the, so.
Because it was making her crazy.
Well, I did it five times. I've done it five ways this Sunday. I copied my spreadsheet so I wouldn't mess up the master one. But the, assuming I screw something up, the formulaically, that is. So you mentioned the difference per year, four hundred and seventy with the full proposal, that's three point eight one. If we de-accelerate the tax sale, you're talking about three hundred and eighty and three point oh eight. So for the total, when you look at the bill writ large, if you look at the municipal portion, it goes, the percentage goes down a lot. The, the, the percent increase on the municipal piece of that bill, just talking about the tax bill, is six point oh four. And that same percentage, when, when you remove the accelerated or de-accelerated tax sale is three point two five. So it's a big difference. It's a three percent ish, a little less difference between de-accelerate or not. On the tax bill. So that's why I thought it was worthy of conversation.
Yes.
But that's the municipal, but it's a good idea to keep the bigger bill in mind. It's still, you know, our share of a bigger bill is still the small, because we're not. Well, compared to the county. So, but it is, that's, it's, it's, it's why it's a tough decision.
You can't split it half.
I mean, one, I was thinking about that, Matt, and I guess we could budget the reserve up, let's say, two hundred thousand. I was thinking about this, not do it this year, but then next year, the, that would be, that would mute that, you would eventually feel the increase. But you could spread it out over two years or three years and ramp up for it over time. That, right?
I mean, you still would have to have the accelerated.
But we would still have to do the accelerated tax sale this year. But we could basically start, you know, getting people used, you know, raising that as opposed to jumping to an eight, to one eight percent. We could dump one percent and one percent, you know, just on that item. Or you just rip the, I call it rip the band-aid. It's kind of like. But, but it's, it's basically, you know, I didn't, I didn't do the math and I know I'm not very good at math in my head. Ninety bucks a year difference to the average assessed property.
The whole thing, the whole thing. Well, municipal is almost, it goes from six to three point two five.
I'm just talking about the difference between doing it and not doing it.
That would cut the municipal increase portion by half.
Yeah, so we go from six point oh four to three point two five if we do nothing different. If we just budget the two hundred thousand situation, if we budget three hundred thousand, that would be higher. I was trying to figure out what the number is to get to like a half a point and I just, I didn't get a chance to kind of figure it out. But it's probably like a hundred fifty thousand is a, a decimal, I forget. I was figuring it out and I ran out of time.
So if there's, that would actually be, knowing like that, if it's two hundred or a hundred and fifty.
Why? I guess it's for me to understand, like.
A hundred thousand dollars.
If you just tell me what number you want that percentage to be. Like, that's the thing, like, the, if you, you, you already know, four hundred thousand cut away or. Not raised by taxes, basically results in. What is it? Two point seven five? So we could do the math, you know. You know, but it's more like, do we want to do the thing? It's going to cost one way or the other.
Councilmember George?
So the next big picture question I have is, we're, we're not running into any cap problems with this.
No.
Okay.
Any one? Yeah, we were like, I was like, tell me we're proposing something that you can't do anyway. Yeah, no.
We are well under appropriation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can you give us, what's the timeline moving forward that you're hoping?
We have to, if we want to stay compliant with the state's allowed schedule and the resume pass, we need to introduce the April first, is that the date of the meeting? The first meeting in April. I don't want to tell you the wrong.
And we want to stay in compliance.
Yeah, we can. So. Whatever our first meeting in April. First council meeting in April.
Because.
Sorry, I know it was somewhere there about, so, April first.
Or the next one is the eighth?
April fourth. So.
The taxes went down ten percent.
You know, we have some time, I can, I can run different scenarios and share that after the meeting if that helps. But I think the, I guess, a big chunk is that de-acceleration of that sale. And it's a, you know, that's why it's, it's not, I, I didn't feel like I could unilaterally make that decision or, you know. This is a policy question, as much as anything. And, you know, it'd be nice, I think it would, the people would like it better. I know we would like it better. But it's, there's a reason it's hard to de-accelerate.
Right, yeah.
We were talking about the surplus before and it seems like our reserve is fairly healthy, not that I'm a budget expert. But I'll defer to our CFO. Would it be possible to draw down a bit more from the surplus, just a bit more to soften the blow on this?
The extra two hundred was where we were going to stay comfortably. We don't want to go below two million.
We don't want to go to beer bones.
And we did. This reflects. So, you know, we did, you know, we're trying, we, let's, we live and we regenerate and that might tell us, you know, we can go a little deeper next time, but, you know.
Okay, I'll step in.
And then I, I did the same thing you did and then it reminded me of the time we had to have a surcharge on the order to for a whole year. And I, you know what, let her just keep doing whatever, you know, that surplus.
We now have a healthy, but yeah, we have a healthy surplus inwards now that we, you know. Touch the rates this year, you know, everything is fairly stable. I think we'll be okay this coming year. That was. Councilmember?
And that was, I mean, that was also, that was a policy choice too, that we kind of, you know, for years, you know, not pushing it away. I think that I, 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 I think I agree with Jason. I, I fully accept the proposal to. To, to accelerate this year. Also, I mean, I, you know, I don't know what the, I mean, sorry. You know, and, and I think the, the open question about, you know, funding coming in from other sources is, this is a really strange year for, for budgeting. And I think that, you know, sometimes we just have to, my impulse is to make the full investment this year and to see where we're at next year. CDVG, other things. We need every cent within our.
Councilmember, have you finished? Councilmember, are you finished?
Yeah.
To follow up on Matt's policy statement, and Matt's policy statement is, I, I'm not sure about the, the acceleration of the sale. You know, survey, there's a section of, and I've dealt with them, and I've done the work for free, help people out with their, you know, taxes and pro bono issues, although the flip side of increasing tax increase for everyone, so I'm kind of on the fence with that. Just a policy comment.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I, I need to think about, play with some numbers, but I, 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 in general, like the idea of de-acceleration, cause I don't wanna give people bills right before.
You get the calls more than anybody. I don't know, your friends call you.
But it's, it's.
I had the same pack, I, I think I said the same thing to Nora, like, okay, this is a handful of people versus. He does.
I get all the, for some reason, I get the calls when people get the taxing sale, like.
I'm happy to know someone is bearing my burden.
And it's my burden, which.
And just to be clear, there's no reason we can't, we can wait on the de-acceleration. It doesn't mean do, not doing this year, we can't do it next year. I, you know, it, it, it's what, we could have done it ten years ago. It's, but it's, you know, it, it came up enough this year between the tax office and the council members, it just felt like it was worth a try. And just at least to have the conversation.
Understood.
Well, one final thought on that, so maybe my tangent before is maybe a little bit less of a tangent, and maybe, maybe something to focus on, so we consider. Um, and I guess, now that I fully appreciate the extent to which that is impacting the potential increase uh, the municipal levy for next year, um, maybe we just do a full court press to try to get as many people as we can signed up for the automatic, uh, payment, so that way it's not too many people getting caught up in it, except for perhaps.
And we've also talked about different notices and kind of like revisiting all of our standard practices to see if there's anything we can do to kind of. Ring the bell, the problem is so many people, there's so, a lot of people don't pay their own taxes and then there's this subset of people who have, you know, paid off their mortgages and now don't have escrows and, um, and they're the ones that that typically find themselves in this quandary. So, yes, those would, we, we, believe you me, we, you know, we discussed it. This would, it'd be nice, I don't lie, I think everybody would like it better, but it is a large, I wanted you to see the numbers because it's, it's sizable. This is basically.
You don't have to make the decision tonight, and that's the beautiful part about it. It's time for you all collectively think about this and let us know.
Well, we should, right? Well, we don't have to vote on it tonight, I think this is your time to think about it and.
And you have your sheet, so you, you all have your sheets, you all can respond back to it.
Getting back in touch and then, you know, talking admin, you know, and that'll be how we refine the budget from there to get it ready for introduction. But I think, um, I really appreciate, I mean, I, I've been wanting to have that conversation for a while, and I, I give Nora credit for kind of saying, let's just try it and see what, what happens. And now we know, we've run the numbers, we have a sense of the impact. So if not this year, we can certainly pursue something in a subsequent year.
What about Main Street?
In this micro print, Matt, did you wanna speak to it, or you want me to do it?
Uh, I mean, it's just, it's a pretty simple, straightforward budget, there's not, uh, there's the basic. They have, uh, have shifted around a, a, a little bit, there, there, there is a plan for additional sponsorships, um, that they have, you know, they, they've decided that they need to reach out to businesses a little bit more, they need to go a lot more, um, door-to-door for sponsorships for various events to sort of raise additional money. So, one of the budget items that does increase is, is from this year to last year is that their intent on going out and getting more businesses to sponsor existing events, and that entails getting out and talking to more businesses face-to-face, which is one of the things we, one of our priorities. And so I think that budget reflects that, that particular priority. But essentially, it's a, it's a, it's a basic flat budget, um, there's not a, a, just a two percent increase in the bit. The amount that we, we give them is, is holding steady.
Was it two percent increase in the bit?
In the bit, right, two percent.
I didn't, I didn't calculate it. But in terms of the amount raised, it's two percent. So you're talking about, like, nine thousand dollars or something.
So, um, uh, the only other thing that, that is, um, uh, that, that rec department is taking, um, is, we're moving to the rec department to take over the five K, a hundred.
It has moved.
It's moved, it's kind, it's, it's, it's there, the rec department is doing a fantastic job, um, at that, there's still some, you know, Rebecca still has some work that she does in that, but, but eventually that'll be moved, uh, and, and that's a good.
And hopefully focus on sponsorship.
They can focus more, and their ideas is focusing more on sponsorships and more on, on direct outreach to businesses.
Okay, so the goal would be to, um, introduce the Main Street budget with our budget, kind of have them on the same track, um, just so we'll, we cite it.
So what, uh, I see there's sponsorships and funding, so is that twenty dollars? Twenty thousand, twenty thousand is what they receive, or is that what they're planning?
That's the revenue. Twenty thousand, uh, sponsorship and, well, it's really forty-three thousand if you look at the total. They have different categories of revenue and expenses.
See the forty-three, three-two-five, that's the increase over what previous year was, and that's based on their, their, their plan and the concerned effort to try and increase the number of sponsorships.
So they're planning to double, basically, almost.
No, you don't have last year's on.
Yeah, um, but it is.
It is about eighteen thousand or?
They went from eighteen to forty-three.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's a big increase, and it, I think it's an increase that reflects the priorities that we've sort of worked together about, about direct outreach to business, um, but it is a big, you know, that's, that's a big, big change.
And they did have a fallback plan.
Yeah, if they don't.
If they don't. That, they do have some reserves.
Reserves that they can.
They wanna make a big push for it.
Any other questions on Main Street budget?
And the version, just to be clear, that you'll see in the future will be more based on categories, not these line, I think, and the one then, basically, the council has the most discretion on is the bid, now, because that's what you're, you're really, your purpose is.
Uh, council president has a question.
Am, am I not reading it right? The staff salary, is it seventy-five to one ninety-one?
No, that's, you look at the columns, general admin, promotions, the total is one ninety-one. It's not that far over what it is now. Cause she's, there's, that includes a full-time person, a payroll person, and a bookkeeper, and, uh, this, the market staff, two market staff, I think, and.
I think it's like two and a half.
Two and a half markets, so that's all salaries is one ninety-one. The first column, this is all twenty-twenty-five, it's this plus this equals that. So it's seventy-five plus one sixteen. They divide salaries by general administration and promotions. So I'm assuming promotions are primarily the people working on farmer's market. Out, and, and then administration is payroll and administration. So the, the rightmost column is the total. You know, I know, it's not how. So, um, so that's, you know, and that is not leaps and bound over last year, it's probably two to.
Yeah, um, can I get a, would I be able to ask a copy of last year's budget, just to come here?
So I have, I have a big version that has.
Well, do you have a version like this, like just?
I have what they gave.
And just another question, what is design, what, what is that budget?
I think I know where I'll let Matt answer.
Before.
There's a whole design, so the, the.
Right, up top of staff, staff salaries.
So the, um, one of the things that Main Street does is, is, um, uh, the design committee is the one who does grants to funding, so that if people apply to, to grant, so the part of the design money is the, the when somebody new wants a grant, they can get it through the design committee, the design committee approves it. Others is staff time for helping them with, like, one of the things that they're doing is revamping the, um, you know, the, the banners on the poles. So, um, the, the, the poles in my bridge are different than the poles down here, and so, trying to figure stuff like that goes into the design cost through the design.
So that's in.
That's all.
That, okay, so this fifty step includes that.
That includes all of the things for those, all of those different design.
And just one thing she did mention, they think they have a grant to do the banners, they're, they're applying for one, but they don't have it, so it's probably not showing the revenue here. They wanna try to do it either way, but they're, they're looking to get a grant, to do that. I don't know where that one grant is on this.
Now it's time for public comment, twenty-one minutes, three minutes per speaker. Comments from members attending in person will be heard first, followed by those on Zoom. And we don't have anyone in public to speak, and, uh, is there anyone on Zoom?
I do have three attendees on Zoom, but I don't see any hands up, yeah.
May I have a motion to close public comment session?
Second.
Call it favor? Okay, there's no formal action that will be taken, and now we're gonna move, move to executive session, may I have a motion? Executive session will be on classic cleaners, potential litigation, track A, track, and track C redevelopment negotiations. May I have a motion to adopt or reject three dash twenty-five ninety-four classic cleaner potential litigation and track A and track C redevelopment, really, really, redevelopment negotiations.
So, second.
Welcome.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember him?
Yes.
Taken on this one at all. May I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Okay.
Matt, when you read a transcript, there's.